All right, good morning. We'll start with pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, will you open a prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We ask that you would help us to take care of the business in a way that you would like for us to, that we could go in the direction that you would have us to go in, to do the best things for the people in Souda County. Thank you, Lord, for those that are together. We ask that you bless this meeting, watch over us, guide us, keep us. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the meeting minutes July 31st as submitted by our clerk.
I would second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds?
Any comments or questions on appropriation? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve the appropriations.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds regarding the sanitary engineer.
Any comments or questions on item three? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll vacate the chair and second.
And I will abstain. No, I haven't voted yet. We haven't voted yet.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
And now I will abstain.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds?
Any comments or questions on item four? Hearing none.
I make a motion we approve the transfer of funds.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, more obligations, and then announced certificates in the total amount of $1,058,284.34.
Any comments or questions on the document? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports?
Any comments or questions on the miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
I make a motion we accept the reports.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of notice to legislative authority from the high department of commerce division of liquor control regarding Xenon Memford, Inc., doing business as 8420, state route 335.
Any comments or questions on item seven? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of change order number five, Souda County Fort Hill Marks Communication Tower regarding ARPA.
Change order number five for the Marks Tower. Contractors requesting a time extension to the contract for an additional 36 days. This would put substantial completion of September 30th of 2025. Commissioner Davis, do you have insight here? I'm guessing weather?
AEP.
Oh, AEP. AP this time?
Yeah. Yeah, just waiting on the connection. It is a pretty good delay. So, September 30th it is. Got to talk to several first responders out at the fair about to delay their... Well, we're saying now is third quarter.
Third quarter.
Still in the third quarter, but these things we just can't, we can't help. It is what it is, so unfortunately, but hopefully this will be the last one.
I talked to some first responders out there also that thought it was already, everything was already, we're right there, it's done. I said, probably not.
Not yet. Not yet. But it will be, and it'll be a great, great improvement, so.
Very good. If there's no additional comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the purchase of servers for the camera system regarding the annex?
So, this purchase service for the camera, the amount at the annex, $67,725.13. Any comments or questions? Hearing none.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the Souda County chemical emergency response preparedness plan regarding AMA?
So, preparedness plan regarding the emergency response that has not planned. It has been reviewed and approved by the Souda County Local Emergency Planning Committee. I did see a comment from Lori McNally asking if this would be available online. As you can see, very big plan. It is available for view here at the office at any given time. Just wanted to point that out. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. That is the end of our fair week agenda. Typically, fair week agendas are a little smaller because we've been out the fair and it's touching base with all the constituency. Any questions, items on agenda?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I just had a question about item 10, you know, like the process of putting together the emergency response plan. Can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, so Larry Mullins, our Director of EMA, this is something that they review frequently, and it goes through the local emergency planning committee. So, they're basically updating and looking at this kind of continually as they do different activities within the county. They do mock disaster recovery, they do mock disaster preparedness, and every year they typically focus on a different item of something that could happen based on whether it's chemical or it's traveling through the community by rail or truck, could be connected to one of the plants in the area. So, every year they target something different to test the plan and to make sure that the response does carry out. I can look to Mr. Smith, I'm guessing you've probably been involved in some of these over years, I'm guessing, and if you haven't, by all means, don't comment, but if you have, feel free to share.
Yes, I have been, and it's really, it's a good thing for all the local first responders in those situations because, you know, there, I'm going back a number of years having done this. You know, I've been a first responder for 40 years, so going back at times when we would have a, like a chemical spill somewhere, and, you know, that was the scenario that was set forth, and we had people respond that really didn't respond in the right way maybe, and you'd pull up and they'd say, no, you're all dead. So, you know, it's great to get those things so that they know what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to respond, and it works well, and it makes sure the, the, the plan works the way it's supposed to. I think, I don't know, I didn't get involved the last couple of years, but one of them, I think, was a active shooter training that they did.
Yeah.
And, and that, you know, that's one of the things that, that we're seeing it happen quite often across the country.
Yeah.
So, it's good to have a plan to be prepared for that and how we're going to respond to it. So, so they put a lot of work into those plans, and usually, you know, every time you go through one of those scenarios, you find things that need to be tweaked, and they tweak it, and then they come back and say, hey, here's another plan, let's put this into it, so.
Are there, are there a lot of controlled materials that pass through the county?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I know there's been a few chemicals, I know there was one near Raritan a few years ago.
Yeah, I mean, just on the rail, you know, there's chemicals traveling by rail all the time, and then, of course, trucking, I mean, if, if it's headed to Pikeville from Pikeville, if it's headed through the community, I mean, we have the rail yard, so there's a lot of things that are there. Of course, everything up in Haverhill, and then just the chemicals needed for some of the processes. Like, there's, I think that's in every community, though. I don't think it's unique to Sodeto County, but yeah, there's for sure, at any given time, chemicals that, if something happens, we appreciate their, the hard work of them reviewing, you know, what could be going on and how to recover from that.
Yeah.
Not in our community, but just recently saw a leak out in Vinton County where they had a plant that was, I forget what was going out into the ozone, but the sky was turning orange, and they had to do some evacuation of different communities based on the wind, or movement of the wind. And in the healthcare side of my life, we were watching that very closely to see if we had to help evac any nursing homes or anything like that, so. Yeah, I mean, that's why we have plans. Hopefully, nothing ever happens, but in the event that it does, like, we have a playbook to go by.
And we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We actually, when we think about rail, we think about transportation by truck, all the communities in our county are touched by that, of course. We've had derailment, we've had leakage of sulfur dioxide in the valley when one train derailed there. I drove right through that when it was going across US 23 because it had just happened. So, those kind of things happen, but we also, we have chemical plants in Sodeto County. We have chemical plants in Greenup County, and because of the shape of our county, the wind and the prevailing winds, like the hydrocarbon plant across the, across the way, there are a lot of possibilities, and our first responders take that very, very seriously, and because of their hard work, I feel that we're rather well-prepared as a result of that, so.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That's all. Did you have something?
And you asked about stuff going through here, and I'm sure that the people in East Palestine didn't think that there was a lot of stuff going through their area. You know, little town, just got the railroad going through, but then we see the issue that happened up there, so we've got to be prepared at all times because we, we really, there's times we have no idea what may be passing through, and one little incident, you know, train derails, and then you've got a big problem.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Any questions, items not on agenda?
I have no questions.
Nothing online? All right, at this point, we'll go to any closing comments. Commissioner Smith?
The only comments I would like to make is I'd like to thank the other commissioners and the staff in here for getting me on my feet and running. It's, it's been, been a whirlwind of a week trying to get things squared away, but every time I come to them with a question, I don't know if they're making it up or whatever it is, but they've got a good answer for it, and I appreciate the, the help that I've got from, from the other commissioners and the staff here to get things on my feet. So, that's basically all I've got to say today.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Davis?
Couple of things. You know, it's been a couple of years since we stood up our swift water rescue teams in, in the county, and I know that, I was, I was talking to someone last night, and they were talking about how during our most recent flooding, they had 19 calls on just that one flood where they were, they were plucking people out in trailers and houses in some really, really swift water. But with that, you know, there's equipment. Equipment has to be replaced, equipment has to, you know, be up to date. That's another part of it. So, we had a standard, you know, conversation about that, and as far as a plan to make sure that we are able to sustain that program, I think it's something we need to look at to help and assist when possible with that, so I know the fire departments have limited budgets, so they do the best they can, but just something to, to keep in the, on our radar on that. Also, you know, I've mentioned, I've mentioned both of you about the Hughes Center in Franklin Furnace. I would like to pursue the lease on that, and we do have an opinion from our Assistant Prosecutor on how to do that, but I do believe we need to proceed with that and get that set up, and I'm, I'm not 100% certain. I need to check to see if we have approved the chairman to negotiate. I need, we need to go back and look, but we need to move on that. It's, it's, I think the people of Sodeto County would prefer that, and so we need to talk about that. And then also, I know that there's been a call out by our sheriff on a archery challenge at the fair, and I went over and checked out the playing field there, and this is a not serious comment that I'm about to make, but challenge accepted. If he wants to play that game, we can do that. I think it's pretty fair. It doesn't require firearms, and I don't know if anybody here is a master archer, so unless there's another skill our new commissioner has that we don't know how, but, but it is rather challenging. I did go over and look at it, and for Sheriff Thurman, challenge accepted. We just need to set a time and a date. I think I've heard Friday, so we would like to start pumping that up on social media as soon as possible. We would like at least 3,000 people to attend that challenge at the fair. It will be in air conditioning. Did I see that right, Mary? It's in an air-conditioned building, so.
Have you guys been practicing?
I was with the sheriff when he shows what we're going to do.
He was with the sheriff, so there's, I, I did, I, but I saw the post, so I went in and checked it out because I'm like, wait a minute, I'm not going into unfamiliar territory here.
Feels like a setup. Feels like a setup.
Well, I don't know who was, I think it was Division of Wildlife runs that booth, so I mean, that's a neutral arbiter of, you know, they're going to be neutral, so, so I'm just bringing this out for the public consumption because there's been a lot of questions about the Sheriff Commissioner Challenge this year as to what we're going to do at the fair. Well, we've been called out. As a matter of fact, he called you out and said he hadn't seen you since the challenge, and I just think that's wrong. But anyways, yeah, just so everybody knows, it's being worked on, and lighthearted moment, we, we are, we are looking into it. So, challenge accepted, Sheriff Thurman. Let's go. Game on.
Where's the gong? Just throw it down. I appreciate you bringing up this swift water rescue. You know, Valley Township Fire Department has gone all in on continuing to expand that offering. I know they just did recently some dive recovery as well, dive recovery training, they're doing more, so they, they are taking this and running with it, and I appreciate all their hard work out there. The only thing extra I have to share, well done to the fair board.
Yeah.
A lot of positive comments going on at the fair right now. The new ride company is, you know, even on Monday, I saw a lot of teens out enjoying the fair. We didn't, we haven't seen that over the past year or so, just whatever happened with the ride companies, but well done to the fair board. The, everything looks good, it's clean. It's, they're doing a great job, and then, of course, all the kids in 4-H. I know they're gearing up for the auctions coming on Saturday, but all of their hard work leading up to this moment, just a great job to them. The barns were bustling with energy, and it's always good to see because that's really, I think we've said this time and again, and I know our engineer does too, is our future leaders are starting in the barns. Like, people that are learning hard work, they're starting in the barns. People that understand discipline, they're starting in the barns. So, we appreciate all the 4-H and the folks that pour it to those children and teaching that leadership and that hard work early on, so. That's all I have to share today. I see, Scott, you jumped up. I'll give you, look, you're out of order, sir, but I'll, I'll give you another, another question.
Much appreciated. I just, I just had a quick question about the Hughes Center. What are the, if you pursue that lease, TCC's there right now, right? Are they planning to leave or?
No, no, they're not. If you recall.
Go ahead. I mean, go ahead.
Okay, so if you recall, we canceled the lease.
Last year?
Yeah. It was in December, I think it was, or I don't recall exactly.
Beginning of year.
November, December, and, and now it's just, it's open.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we, we had expressed our interest then to renegotiate a lease. We need to reach out to them. We need to get this done. So, I, I think it's, it's time, and we'll pursue it. Where it heads, I don't know. I don't know. But, I mean, there's fair market value for commercial properties, so, I mean, we need to look at that and determine what that looks like, and then sit down with them and negotiate a fair price and move forward. There hasn't been any expression by them to move out, but we'll, we'll see. We'll see where it goes.
So, it's thoroughly stated, still that process?
I'm sorry?
It's the early stages of that process.
Oh, very much so. We, we haven't even sat down at the table and done that, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn, sir.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got to say.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Make sure you go to the fair. Create some memories with your families. We'll see you out there. Have a good day.